Good evening. This 70th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Wayne Lee of the Christian Liberty Church. In following that, we will have the President of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this opportunity to come to your throne of grace. And Lord, we ask for forgiveness of sin, Lord Jesus, and ask that you would create in us a clean heart and renew a right spirit. And Lord, in this hour, we come and ask for your guidance by your Spirit, praying even right now, Lord God, that you will open up ears and hearts and minds, that the councilmen and the dignitaries that are here would make decisions according to your will, led by your wisdom. And Lord, I pray even right now, in the name of Jesus, Lord Jesus, that we articulate decisions not off of our own understanding, not off of our own agenda, but will be pleasing and beneficial to the citizens of Baltimore, but also bring glory unto your name. Lord, I pray even right now for Congressman Elijah Cummins' family, that you would comfort them even right now. And Lord Jesus, I pray even right now for the mayor of the city. I pray for the councilman president, Lord Jesus, Brandon Scott, that you would give him, Lord Jesus, wisdom like you've given Solomon. I pray even right now, Lord, as we are convening here and the agenda is at hand, that we will not forget that the government rests upon your shoulders. And as we rest upon you, we pray that we yield to you. We pray for the city of Baltimore as we bind up the spirit of mental illness, of depression, of homicide, of poverty. Lord Jesus, we thank you that you are doing a new thing. And I pray even right now, Lord God, that the people that are here and the people that serve this great city will not become weary and well-doing. We thank you that you have fearfully and wonderfully made us in your image. We thank you that we are not labeled as what the country or this world dictate, Lord. But I thank you for even the young people that are here, that you have given them vision and dreams. And I pray even right now for their hearts and their minds to have a platform to be heard. Lord, we love you, and as we seek your guidance, Lord Jesus, we pray that we turn from our wicked ways. And Lord, we pray that you bring a revival to this city, a revival of hearts, a revival of minds, a revival of spirit of unity and of love. And we thank you as we look to you, the author and the finisher of our faith, knowing that our work is not in vain. We love you, we honor you, we bless you as we lift you, in Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Showcase Baltimore. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenter is Corner Boys Enterprises.
Thank you for your time. Maybe I should have let one of them speak first. They're all typically taller than me. My name is Kai Crosby Singleton. I'm the community liaison for the Office of Strategic Initiatives at Maryland Institute College of Art. This year, I've had the pleasure of working over the last 10 months with this group of When I met them, they were actually running a lean startup business at the corner of Mount Royal and North Avenue, and their lean startup was cleaning windows. So I've heard, and they may have been referred to as squeaky boys, but that doesn't give the full scope of what and who they are. They took the fifth element of hip-hop, and for those who know, that's knowledge, no matter where you got it, and put it to work. So when they took that squeaky, no matter where they got it, and put it to work, they executed a lean startup, which is working with the very bare minimum. They shared their money cooperatively, and from that, we took the code of conduct that they had been living and working under, and we typed it up, and that made it real to everyone else. And when we went and we asked, "What do you want to do?", they said, "We're entrepreneurs. We already do that." I asked them, "How can we help?" When they came to the 7th Annual Baltimore Thinkathon at Maryland Institute College of Art, they were greeted by President Hoi, Dr. Sherri Parks, Michael Scott from Equity Matters, Adrian Harpul from Harpul and Associates, and since then, they have met every Wednesday consistently to build not only a brand, but a business, a cooperative, public benefit Thankfully, that has been put into act and will be completely stood up by the University of Maryland's Law Center. They have lawyers to defend their business, and in front of every councilman and councilwoman, there's a bottle of Corner Boys Enterprise water. When I asked them if they knew how much their business was worth, they told me how much they could make in a day, and we explained, "People don't leave their house to have their windows cleaned at a corner, but they will buy your hustle." So we bottled that hustle, and we're putting it in front of you because right now, KBZ Enterprise dot com is live. Their business is real because they were already business people. And I implore those that hear this message to know, every kid that you see on a squeaky corner, as you call it, is a business person waiting for an opportunity. We leveled the institutional access of Maryland Institute College of Art, University of Maryland's Law Center, and our individual power as political movers and shakers, people that you hear on the radio, people that you see and respect and put it behind the kids that you didn't see, the kids that were invisible unless they were in the news because someone had done something and felt threatened by them. Well, today, they stand before you as business people asking you not to extend charity, but to do the very next step in imploring and asking anything of another business, and that's to go into business with them, because that is the highest form of caring. So right now, it might only be water, but soon to come, I'm pretty sure you can imagine how far they're going to extend their brand. Their logo was designed by Jerome Harris, a nationally award-winning graphic artist. And the question is, how many more artists or entrepreneurs are willing to say, "I can go into business with somebody that recognizes who they are"?
Kian, Leroy, Tay-Tay, anybody? Do I have to say something? Even if this is thinking?
How y'all doing? My name is Deontay. I want to thank everybody for coming out because at one point in time, I didn't think, like, I would be a business person. I think I'd just be squeezing. But one day, like, I was just outside squeezing, and a guy came out there and asked us, did we want to come up with a plan? But at first, I wasn't going to the meetings, and then, like, a month later, I started going to all the meetings, and then, once I started going to the meetings, I started learning more about business. And when I started learning more about business, we came up with a solution to come up with a water brand because one day, they're going to try to stop the squeaky boys, and we got to have something to fall on, and that's what we came up with. So, thank everybody for coming out.
Anyone else? Well, thank y'all. Thank y'all so very much. Thank you for the water, and we look forward to supporting you more in the future. Oh, yes, ma'am. Come on.
So the business plan, you won't see them on the corner selling water. The business plan is to resell water. We have, we launched on Friday. We've got more than 54 orders so far from the website, and so the idea is that we order the water from Bism, which many of you have dealt with, and we resell it. We've got one restaurant already. So the idea is to have pallet size, half pallet size. We're working to find several retail outlets where people can come up and pick up a case or two at a time. So that is the business model. It's very different from what they were doing before.
So in economics, we call it a switching opportunity. So the city's already buying water. It can use its power to switch who it buys it from and make a difference. And not only these boys' life, but the boys and young men and women that come to follow because they've already, first of all, it's a public benefit corporation. Secondly, they will commit a portion of their profits to extend other kind of programming and learning that they've been experiencing. So it's a good investment sometimes to make a little less margin or to pay a little more if it has ancillary benefits. We know this is an economic precedent, and so I just, I wanted to offer that as you consider this this evening.
Thank you, and thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Thank you. Tonight's youth showcase presenter will be students from Mrs. George's class from Baltimore Polytechnic Institute.
Hello. My name is Jamira Queen, and I'm a representative from the Baltimore Polytechnic Institute. And we here, seven of us, from Mrs. George 11th grade engineering class, where each morning we do a journal entry. And this day's journal entry was to describe your city if it were a person. So here are some journal entries from the students, and here's mine. Baltimore. She's a fierce woman who has a reputation, good and bad. From the outside, she looks big, but on the inside, she is small, and every part of her is connected to form one whole. She is filled with many beautiful things that define her character. Her character was built from years of riots, culture, slave trades, the years of poverty, and many challenging situations that made her into who she is today. A woman whose history created her to become an unstoppable human being. She gets through many different situations. Her personality is outgoing. She is the life of the party. When she travels, everyone knows who she is. From the club music art in her groove, she is defined as beautiful.
My name is Stephen Barnes, and here's my journal entry. Baltimore City is in dire need of help. Baltimore City is in dire need of help. There are some, they are someone with fast glory in older times, but have since fallen from grace and lost touch with what they are capable of. The biggest thing holding Baltimore back is its drug addiction. Everyone takes their lumps, and this is nothing short of that. The little devil on Baltimore's shoulders has steered them in the wrong direction, but I believe the angel is just a bit late for work.
My name is Patience O'Day. Baltimore is like a model where each and every distinct accessory are the various opportunities Baltimore has to offer. Their earrings are Baltimore's amazing high schools such as Poly City, Western, and BSA, just to name a few. Their shoes are Baltimore's youth summer employment program, the best there is to offer, keeping students off the streets and engaged in their communities. Their dress is Baltimore's tourist attraction, the National Aquarium, which is home to many different aquatic creatures. Their demeanor represents Baltimore's elegant architecture, their hair the friendly people, and lively pockets of nightfall and music that make Charm City a pleasant and fun place to call home.
My name is Eliana Ballad, and as you all know, I'm in the 11th grade, and I go to Poly. This is what I wrote. Baltimore is a beautiful aged woman, her beauty often expressed through her scars, for which she has many. She is the loving mother who has birthed many greats, her children educated yet untamed. And like her children, in her youth, she was a delinquent, not knowing what to do. Her exterior rough and ragged, but her heart pure. Her intentions for all, to be great, to be good, to be delight.
My name is Sean O'Neill, and I am in 11th grade. This is what I wrote. Describing my city. My city is a similar cliche, beautiful on the outside, ugly on the inside. Baltimore is a very flawed lady. Her whole life, she has witnessed theft, murder, rape, and kidnappings. Baltimore has been through a lot, but yet she still strives for greatness with the community she's built, the people she's inspired to make a change, and the money she has been making. Baltimore has been through a lot, but yet she's still, in this day and age, a beautiful person.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Megan Shaw. I'm in the 11th grade, and I attend Baltimore Polytechnic Institute. Me describing Baltimore, I would say it's a demented, chaotic, idiosyncratic city. Baltimore is such a rowdy city. There's always something going on, whether it be good or bad, but chaos here is something one doesn't bypass. Also, the way it's run is unusual to me. One would think firearms would be banned because of the death rate, but they're still on the streets because the patriarchy wants us to destroy ourselves, but most of us aren't ready for that conversation yet.
My name is Miguel Nankashore, and I go to Poly, and I'm in the 11th grade. Baltimore. I've known Baltimore for 16 memorable years of my life. Baltimore has been both friend and foe to the point where all the wrong becomes right. She's one foot in, one foot out, and always changing her routes. At this point, I'm used to the rain. It doesn't change if the sun doesn't come out. Although Baltimore has made me into a man and is the foundation of my well-being, she has repeatedly stabbed me in the back without reason. I need to get away. I've tried leaving. She keeps testing me. I'm passing without cheating. Baltimore is a bipolar, 43-year-old woman. You love her, but you hate her with your guts. Baltimore is my city, and I seem to be trapped in a rut. If it's so easy, why does it feel hard? Because I'm stuck.
Thank you, young people, for your beautiful heartfelt words, and also I'd like to recognize that teacher, Ms. George, in the back. Ms. George, wave to everyone. And young people, you are, if you want to, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. Roll call. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the October 28th, 2019 proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the Journal will be adopted. The Journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two through four of the agenda. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 19-0465, Port Covington District and Port Covington Community Benefits District Management Authority. For the purpose of creating a community benefits district for Port Covington, specifying the boundaries of the district, creating a community benefits district management authority, and providing for its rights, duties, and powers, providing for the selection and composition of the authorities, of the authorities' board of directors, designating the initial interim board of the authority, and providing for the selection and approval of a full board, including authority to establish up to three classes of board membership with certain approval rights granted to each class, creating the administrator for the authority and approving a potential administrator, mandating the financial responsibilities of the authority and the city in conjunction with the operation of the authority, excuse me, of the district, providing for a supplemental tax to be collected for the authority, authorizing the creation of separate classes and subclasses of property for the purpose of establishing different rates of supplemental tax, authorizing the creation of credits to facilitate a diverse residential mix, incorporating the assessment, collection, and enforcement processes for the supplemental tax within the procedures and processes already existing, specifying the role of the city in maintaining and enhancing existing services, encouraging the creation of partnerships between and among the authority, the city, the state, the federal government, and other property owners not subject to the supplemental tax, establishing the Board of Estimates as the agency charged with reviewing and approving various matters relating to the district and the authority, providing for the renewal, expiration, termination, and approval of the district and the authority, authorizing, excuse me, otherwise providing for the existence, operation, and control of the district and the authority, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, Costello.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is, this bill would establish a community benefits district in Port Covington. Just by way of background, we have five other community benefits districts in the city right now. Downtown Partnership, Waterfront Partnership, Midtown Community Benefits District, Charles Village Community Benefits District, and the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership. And each of those instances, with the exception of the South Baltimore Gateway Partnership, real property owners pay an additional surcharge on the real property bill. That money goes into a pot and is used to fund traditionally things such as clean, green, public safety, and marketing. South Baltimore Gateway Partnership being the outlier because it is funded by Casino Impact Funds. So this would essentially create that community benefits district for the real property owners in Port Covington. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0466, Human Trafficking Notice Requirements Corrective. For the purpose of correcting a typographical error in the city code regarding the appropriate number to text message in order to report human trafficking and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors, Burnett, President Scott, Henry.
This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 19-0179R, Informational Hearing, BGE Plan Power Outages. For the purpose of inviting representatives from BGE, the Department of Transportation, the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Baltimore Police Department, the mayor's deputy chief of staff for public safety, the Department of Public Works, the Baltimore City Fire Department, and the mayor's office of emergency management to discuss protocols and best practices for planned power outages. Sponsors, Henry, President Scott, Dorsey, Burnett, Cohen, Bullock, Pinkett, Clark.
Thank you. Please add Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. BG&E has been doing some work to upgrade the power grid, and as such, they have been doing planned outages in certain neighborhoods, and my understanding is that these are going to move across the city as BG&E continues to do its work. And so we would like to have BG&E come in and meet with the city's operational agencies and make certain that we are doing as much as we can do to minimize the impact of these outages on our neighborhoods, and also to make sure that BG&E is doing as much as they can do to notify the neighborhoods and be appreciative of the inconvenience that they are causing to people as they are moving forward with this work.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 19-0180R, Diversity of Programming. For the purpose of urging Comcast to comply with its franchise obligation to maximize the diversity of programming over the Comcast system. Sponsors, Sneed, President Scott, Dorsey, Burnett, Cohen, Henry, Pinkett, Clark.
Chair recognizes, please add Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Sneed.
Thank you. It's come to my attention that on December 10th, Comcast could be pulling stars from their content. The franchise agreement requires Comcast to not discriminate among subscribers with respect to fees, charges, deposits, and other terms and conditions affecting any services. So goodbye, I would like to say, to top-rated shows like Power that people have been talking about all weekend, and Outlander. Comcast has publicly stated their intention to drop the network from all packages and bundles, ignoring industry precedents and demonstrating a total disregard for its customers, communities, suppliers, and stakeholders. Baltimore City is a majority black city. We already know that television often does not provide programming options that reflect the black experience, appeal to black audience, nor created by black people. The potential loss of major black networks as a result of these ongoing disputes would harm black businesses, black arts and cultures, and black community. Comcast specifically has agreed to improve its television offerings as outlined in an MOU filed with the FCC, yet Comcast remains in active disputes with parent companies of many channels that offer primary programs to black audience, including stars and BN Sports. Sorry. So, where are we at? So, Mr. President, I would move that this bill be immediately adopted.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer. Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Councilman Stokes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted. Consent calendar. You can find the consent calendar in section A at the back of the agenda. Without objection, the consent calendar will be approved. The consent calendar is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for second and third reader for the remainder of the hearing.
Without objection, we will have short titles be read for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Committee reports. We will now move to bills on second reader. Judiciary Committee.
City Council, City Council Bill 19-0401, Comprehensive Bag Reduction.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill was introduced on June 17th. The Judiciary Committee held hearings on August 6th, August 28th, September 23rd, October 7th, and October 28th. There are amendments on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Amendments are, please note, Councilwoman McCray is a nay. The amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have an amendment that I'm bringing to the floor to correct a mistake in the definitions. It is on members' desks, and I would move it at this point.
Discussion.
Discussion. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you. Mr. President, as you're aware, and the sponsors are aware, we held five hearings on this bill. We came to a bill that is before us today, which reflects the position of the environmental community and also reflects support from the business community, specifically from retailers. I'm not sure how we arrived at a place where we have a bill that has been before this council for over four months, in which we have held five hearings on this, and we are now discovering a mistake. So I am somewhat confused by that and also concerned by that because, again, we have support from the environmental community for this bill, and we have support from the retail community for this bill, which is the industry that is affected most by this. So again, I share with you, Mr. President, and my colleagues, that I am a bit confused as to where this is coming from and why, as chair of the committee, I'm finding out about it about an hour and a half before today's hearing where we're voting on this on second reader. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yep. All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Please note that Councilwoman McCray is a nay, Councilman Costello is a nay, Councilman Stokes is a nay. Roll call. Yes.
Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Henry.
Explain my vote.
Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you. I am voting yes in favor of this amendment. It was brought to my attention, three and a half hours before the meeting tonight, that after the issue what the committee went through over the last few weeks, arguing over the thickness of the bags that would be defined as plastic checkout bags, that the final phrase in the current definition, "not designed or intended for reuse", could cause pro- phrase in the current definition, "not designed or intended for reuse," could cause problems for interpretation as we moved forward, since we had seen that there are thinner bags that are marketed as being intended for reuse. And so in an effort to avoid confusion down the line, we agreed to try at this point to remove that from the definition, so it would not be an issue moving forward. And I hope that the council members appreciate the opportunity that at least we caught it at second reader, and not at third reader, as sometimes is the case in this body. Thank you.
Is that a aye? Thank you. Councilman Schleifer.
I want to find what it is, I don't know.
We'll come back to Councilman Schleifer. Councilman Pinkett. Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock. Councilman Reisinger. Councilman Costello. Councilman Stokes. Councilwoman Sneed. Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Schleifer.
Councilman. Go ahead and announce it.
There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and the affirmative, five and the negative, and one pass.
All right. Amendments approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. Please note, Councilwoman McCray is a nay. This bill moves to third reader. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 18-0307, Water Accountability and Equity Act.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray.
Mr. President and colleagues, there's a package of amendments on the members' desks. These amendments largely consist of those that Chairwoman Middleton intended to move at the last meeting, plus a couple more that are technical in nature. I am now moving all of the amendments found on the council members' desk.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye. All opposed say nay. Amendments are approved. Under City Council Rule 123B, this bill will be held and will be returned to the third reader for final passage at the next city council meeting.
City Council Bill 19-0406, Franchise Cell Co. Partnership Doing Business As Verizon Wireless. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0407, Franchise New Singular Wireless PCS. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0413, Planned Unit Development, Amendment Two, Whitehall Cotton Mill. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0430, Repeal of Ordinance 16-0580, Northwood Commons Planned Unit Development. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0456, High Performance Newly Constructed Dwellings Clarification. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. School for the Arts Athletics remain still to this day undefeated. The Transportation Committee will hold hearings on Bills 190341 and 190342. These are two franchise bills related to the MTA. Bill 19-0341 is a franchise for Baltimore Region Rapid Transit System, Sections A and B, known as the Metro Subway. And Bill 190342 is a franchise for the Central Light Rail, both of which have expired. We will hold hearings on this outside of our normal hearing time on Wednesday, December 4th, at 2:00 PM and 2:05 PM respectively. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. Committee announcements on this side. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Department's Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, November 20th, 2019, at 10:00 AM to review the following nomination for Commission on Sustainability, Mia J. Bloom and Nicole Lusant. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. The work session scheduled for Council Bill 19-0410, the Baltimore City Trauma Responsive Care Act is being moved from Tuesday, November 19th, 2019, to Thursday, November 21st, 2019, beginning at 9:50 AM here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19-0445 on Wednesday, January 15th, 2020, at 1:05 PM in the council chambers. This is a zoning, it's a conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to a two-dwelling units in the R7 zoning district located at 817 Chauncey Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing for a bill that was introduced this evening.
Without objection, the rule will be suspended. Rule is suspended.
I'd like to announce a Public Safety Committee meeting for November 12th, 2019, at 3:00 PM in council chambers to discuss Bill 19-0466, Human Trafficking Notice Requirements Corrective.
Thank you. Any other committee announcements? Regular announcements. First, I would like to ask that Councilman Reisinger honor a moment of silence for the now 287 victims of homicide in Baltimore City this year. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I'm going to read this because it's so eloquently written by an alum. I rise in recognition of a monumental accomplishment for a major institution in my district. That institution is Baltimore City College. On Saturday, the 131st City Polygame was played at Morgan State University. Coming into the game, the all-time series was tied at 62-62. Are you excited yet? On Saturday, City defeated Poly for the eighth time in a row with a score of 10 to 6, and finally took the lead in the all-time series for the first time since the 1970s. That's even before I was in city council. Please join me in congratulating both City and Poly for a fantastic rivalry that is interwoven into the fabric of our great city, City Forever.
City Forever.
And on that positive note for the evening, I'd like to thank, for a wonderful athletic accomplishment, the Department of General Services and its director, its new director, Ms. Chi Chi. On Saturday, all day, and on Sunday, all day, the Department of General Services people came out as volunteers to fix the fallen-in roofs at the Northwood Baseball League Field on Argon Drive, right there across and down the street from Morgan State University, next to the Murphy Center. That field belongs to the city, but it's on lease for the league to maintain it, which they do. But rebuilding two roofs on two buildings goes beyond regular maintenance. And so the agency turned out, the league coaches turned out, and the moms, and everybody else, and the players. And we have roofs, we have a cutback of a lot of brush and bushes that would block in the players, and it's beautiful. And I just want to thank the Department of General Services. As director, when I first got there, she was on the roof of one of the buildings repairing it. When I left, she was still on the roof, and it wasn't a fear of ladders. It was just she was determined to work with her people to get that roof on its. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your words. Regular announcements. Councilman Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that when we acknowledge a moment of silence for Lonnie Rutherford Penny, longtime resident of Sandtown Winchester, passed away last Thursday at the age of 85. He was a retired police officer, a retired Marine, retired pilot. This man was pretty busy during his life, but he lived in the Sandtown Winchester community for 70 years, moved away for a period to Kentucky to convalesce, and came back home to visit family and passed away. So it was clear that he wanted to come back to Sandtown, come back home for his final resting place. So I ask that we acknowledge Lonnie Rutherford Penny. Thank you.
Thank you. Regular announcements. Regular announcements, well, one more before, I just want to, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know sometimes we get mired down in some of the deaths and some of the challenges in our city, but two things I want to highlight. One, some of you have seen me bring my son to City Hall, my younger son, George, is turning five today, so just want to wish him a happy birthday.
Yeah.
And the other piece is, it's also listed in the journal, but James Mosher Baseball, Little League, longest-running continuously African-American Little League, celebrated 60th anniversary on Friday evening. And so there are so many leaders and dignitaries and just regular folks who have come through James Mosher Baseball. It's more than just sports, but it's also about character development and mentorship. So again, just want to highlight that success and hoping them for years of continued progress in our city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to James Mosher. Before I recognize Councilman Reisinger, I want to wish all of Baltimore City's public schools' football teams well as they move into the playoffs, as this is the time of the year. Would particularly like to wish well the undefeated Baltimore City champion, Mervo Mustangs, as they move into the playoff season. Both Mervo and Dunbar, that Councilman Stokes are proud of, are ranked in the top six in the state, and have a great chance of bringing home state championships. So I know that the councilman and I will be following them all around the state for the next couple of weeks. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. The next meeting of the city council will be held on Monday, November 18th, at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. And, Mr. President, I ask for a moment of silence for Lonnie Rutherford Penny, Mike Wise, and the 287 homicide victims.
There being no further business, this concludes the 70th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council.